WDEB News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month, and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equithousan Leader, Member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order, please rise. Pledge the flag by Commissioner Leon Stepp and opening prayer by Commissioner Justin Miller.
Good morning, President, Mr. Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for everyone that's come to our meeting tonight. Lord, we just pray that you would direct our decisions that's made here tonight. Lord, we also would like to ask for your hand to be upon the people that's suffered from these tornadoes, Lord. Just pray that you have your hand on them. Pray, Lord, that you'd have your will there. God, we just pray that you keep us safe on our way home tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Mandel, you call the roll, please.
Mickey, here. Justin?
Here.
Rod? Kim? Here. Benny?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Lester? Leon?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Nine present, one absent.
Item number five. Consideration of the minutes from October and also the November meeting minutes. Does anyone see any discrepancy in those? If not, we hear a motion to accept it.
I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Nine, four, one absent, motion passes. Item number six is consideration of approval of notaries. We have two. One is Jamie L. Meadows, and the other one is Rebecca R. Crockett. Y'all hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman? So moved by Commissioner Benny Hughes, second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number seven, proclamation honoring the Fintress County Senior Center Chair Volleyball Team for their gold and bronze medals wins at the Senior Olympics held in Cumberland County on 10/27/2021. Would y'all care to come on up to the front, please?
Off the lake. Lord of the Mission honoring Fintress County Senior Center Volleyball Team. Whereas Fintress County Senior Volleyball Team, he was at the state championship on Wednesday, October 27, 2021, at the airport. Whereas Fintress County, where the competition is in the lab, government, Fintress County was represented by two teams from our center. Whereas number one, where it's sized to be seven, Dave Mustard, Luke Reagan, Diane Jarland, June Turner, and Danny Turner. He's going to the first place for the competition with eight old ladies. There's two that they can't. Whereas Dean Cooper, who's been to Tennessee, was proud of Dean Captain Roger Ellis, Dr. Green and Griffin, Earl Dawson, Wayne McHattville, Lynn Hawkins, Dale Lance, Mark Tenney. In those two competitions, the competition with five three ladies. Whereas Fintress County, one brought home a gold medal, whereas Fintress County, one brought home a bronze. Whereas our business place, fourth shift, field, and cause of better. Coach Dean, Captain Dave Mustard, is a confident, practical organization of things, and a formidable character for term. In that job, or life, and the lessons of Fintress County means to cause performance. Therefore, we declare a complaint that Fintress County Senior Volleyball Team honors the first day of December, 2021, on behalf of Fintress County, office, and officials, and about the two, the regulation, and said, we have represented Fintress County. This is myself, this is on our own, this is in court.
All right, now, if you make a game.
All I can say is bring it on.
Say okay on that, Leon? If you don't get somebody to back me up?
I have to say, I have a little practice in that department, so you know.
Bring it on. Anyway, we certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate your attendance at the Senior Center. Item number eight. Consideration of approval of the FY 630/2020 Fintress County Audit Report as presented by the Fintress County Audit Committee, presented by Tiffany Crabtree, Chairman of the Audit Committee.
Good evening, everyone. You should all have received a copy in advance of the Audit Committee's report, and so if you have any questions, I'd love to hear them. But just a quick summary of what we did. There were five members, and we had three meetings to review the findings of the state audit team for fiscal year ending 6/30/2020. We also met with the auditors themselves, and then had a follow-up meeting with the various officials and supervisors from the departments, with an emphasis on those departments that had findings. Of course, there were eight total findings, two of those were recurring, and you have all those details in the report. We were very pleased with most of the officials that we spoke with were already taking steps to correct their findings within their department, and so that was very encouraging to see many of the errors were already corrected and resolved. I would like to point out one of the recurring findings in the Finance Department, or the Finance Office. It's listed in there in detail. It's the one that's labeled general ledger payroll liability accounts that were not reconciled monthly. And the reason I point this out is just because we do have a recommendation for there to be a committee formed. We've called it a Take Action Committee, so that the Finance Director's Office can communicate with the school board or the school system, because the finding involves the payroll liability balances from the school system employees and their payroll, as well as the county. And so in order for those to be reconciled appropriately, they would need open communication between those two offices. But if there's any other questions?
So what comes from the school board, their findings actually falls on the Finance Department, correct?
Exactly, exactly. So what it is, the payroll liability balances, in particular the health insurance liability, is a combination of county employees and the school system employees. And since the county does not take care of the personnel issues and the HR issues at the school system, they're not informed of changes that are made when there's an employee change or a personnel change. And so in order for them to reconcile those accounts, they need that information to make sure the balances are accurate.
And that information's not coming from the board?
Correct, or from the office.
From HR, or whoever.
And so just to keep communication open, if there was an employee from the Finance Director's Office and an employee from the school system, whoever was responsible for that information, as overseen then by the Finance Director and the Superintendent of Schools, it would just make everything a little more, just for communication to flow freely between them.
So y'all recommend a two-person committee, is that correct?
Yes.
One representing the school board?
The school system.
The school system?
Yeah. In particular, whoever is responsible for payroll changes and insurance changes, benefits changes.
And someone from the Finance Department?
Yes.
And who picks that, or whatever?
To be picked by probably the Finance Director and then the School Superintendent, as they would know their own offices best.
And y'all would like to see that in place, starting?
Starting next fiscal year, for sure.
I'm starting January 1.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta start it. I mean, you can't just wait. It needs to be started and fixed now.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the audit report finding. Motion made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to accept the audit findings. Second by Commissioner Justin Miller and Benny Hughes. Roll call, please.
Mickey? Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Pass.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent.
Stephanie, thank you very much. So Tyler, I guess you'll be in charge of appointing that. Someone from your office, someone from the school board again. Item number nine, consideration of approval of resolution reconfirming the authorization for the candidates to join the State of Tennessee and other local governments as participants in the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements. Ms. Leslie, would you like to say something to that, or?
That, and I believe number 12, is it? Essentially, you all already did that by motion, approved us to accept those settlement funds, which we don't have an exact amount of what they will be, and they are distributed over many years, like 18 years or something. But they, after the meeting last month, they sent us these resolutions. First, they send you paperwork that says you need to hurry up and approve us to accept this money on your behalf, and when we do that, and send them, oh, we've done it, they say, oh, wait, we want you to do that by resolution. Here, call a meeting. No, we have until January 2, I think. So essentially, y'all already done this, just by motion, we need it by resolution. And I think that also can take into consideration item number 12, which is another of the drug makers. They get approved, the settlements get approved per drug maker, not as one big whole. So we have to approve each individual settlement with each drug maker, and these are two of them.
Chairman, I move that we pass Resolution 2021-33. Item number nine, motion made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to accept, and second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Nine, four, one absent, item number nine passes. Item number 10, consideration of approval of Resolution 2021-34, authorizing permission to apply for the Tennessee Arts Grant to place a painted art mural at 114 East Central Avenue. This mural will showcase local scenery and beauty of Fintress County, no match required for this grant. That spot where that's going to be is right there where the Fintress County floors used to be. If you're coming west, you'd see the whole side of the, the whole side of the building there, and that there is what this here, what has to apply for that right there, and like it says, it's no match required. Do you have some more information on that, Ms. Mandel?
Amanda Maynard is working on the art grants. It's the artist that Ms. Kim Davidson had, our Commissioner, had sent back to us in the summer and said, this would be a great idea for, you know, community development. So Amanda Maynard's working on the application, and it should be something, I think, that would be beautiful downtown to represent the scenery of Fintress County. So I think the deadline, it's not until the end of February, but this is for the next fiscal year, so it wouldn't, any work wouldn't start until July of next year.
If you have any thoughts of what you might want on it, just let Amanda know, and she'll get with Amanda Maynard and get a free sketchup or something other.
I make a motion to approve.
We got the city's approval to do that inside the city also.
My second.
Motion by Commissioner Justin Miller, second by Commissioner Judy Matthews. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. Item number 11, consideration of approval of Resolution 2021-35, authorizing permission to apply for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Tyler, Larry, or someone want to speak to this?
Tyler, explain it there. Tyler?
This is the same grant that we bought the power cots with a couple years ago for the ambulance service. It has a 5% match, which is on that resolution down towards the bottom. The grant is due in December 17, so in just a few days is the due date on the grant, and it probably won't be awarded till March or April. Larry spoke with the guy that made, or the guy that gets the turnout gear for him, and it will probably be towards the end of next year before you'd be looking at paying for this, so it would actually be in next fiscal year's budget. But this is to apply for the AFG grant.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion being made by Commissioner Mickey McDonald to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes, any discussion?
Yeah, we'd like to say, we met with the State Fire Marshal's Office and dignitaries Friday about noon, and we were unaware that they've actually got a pool of money that strictly set up for helping fire departments. We were unaware that we can actually request money to cover the funding for the grant. They give priority to that. If you want to ask for money from them to purchase something, it's more competitive, but if you're asking for money to match a grant, any type of grant, state, federal, or whatever, that's top priority for this money. So what we'll probably do, and I've not gotten an email from her yet, but she's supposed to send us the information on how we're to ask this. So that's what we'll, when we get to that point, if we get the grant, then we want to, instead of using taxpayer dollars, we want to ask them to give us some money to match the funds.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Pass.
Julie?
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent.
Motion passes. Item number 12, what Ms. Leslie had mentioned there a moment ago, acknowledgment of the executive participation agreements for the Jensen and distributor opioid settlements. Need to say anything else?
Again, you all have already voted on that. We just didn't have a copy of it for your packet last time, and it goes right along with the resolution you just passed. Motion to approve.
Motion by Kim Davidson, second. Commissioner Mickey McDonald, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number 13. Consideration of approval of extension of the Fintress County Department of Children's Services and Human Services Lease, LE 2687. Approval of temporary lease in the amount of $47,880 annually. This is a two-year agreement that can be terminated anytime by giving a 30-day notice. And this here is a, just a short-term lease before they get into the renovations, and like it says, it can be changed within 30 days when we get the renovations done, or when they get started, whatever, but we'll talk more about the renovations when we get down there. This is just a temporary lease, it's for, for the time being, at the same amount of money that they're paying right now. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve by Commissioner Benny Hughes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Lester? Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Nine, four, one absent, motion passes. Get in here to item number two. Y'all have a picture of the renovations there in your packet. Approval of the renovations at the Department of Human Services Building as required by State of Tennessee to contract with Upland Design for engineering and oversight of the project. So DHS has come up with some renovations that need to be done there. The amount is in the next part we'll get to in a moment. But just your top paper from Upland Design there, has some monetary figures in it, we'll talk about in the next section, but this is just the approval of the renovations.
Has anyone at the Health Department seen this and approved to send it to us? Is this, this is what they're sending to us?
This is what they're sending to us, that they, from the Department of Human Services has drawn up.
This is the lower level, it's not the elder part.
This is the lower level, it's not the top.
This is the DCS and DHS.
But they've looked at these plans, and this is what they want.
This is what they've looked at, and this is what they recommended, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve it.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve. I hear a second.
Second.
Robert Cooper with a second on the approval of renovations. Any more discussion?
This is at their expense, correct?
This is at their expense, but it will be paid back over a period of time. We will pay the...
We have to, we have to pay this upfront. And we figure it into their rent for them to pay it back.
Over 10 years.
So how much is the renovation cost?
It's on your sheet there.
$172,500 is the, is the engineering estimate.
That's engineering estimate. We have to come up with that, and then they, it is attached to their rent over a 10-year period.
Is that just an estimate, or are we going to put, I mean, it's got to go out on bids, right?
It'll go out to bid. That's the engineering estimate. Alan said, at this time, he can't guarantee nothing like that. He can't guarantee anything, because the bids he's been seeing is so crazy.
Right.
Totally different from the Health Department. The Health Department calls a firm, and they say, we've got $300,000 that we can put toward renovations of y'all's building. You care if we do it? That's what the Health Department did. And then Human Services, the Department of Human Services comes through and says, we want to spend this much, we want y'all to renovate it and pay for it, and then we will, and then we'll, then you add over 10-year period what you need to make the rent more, which would come to about $1,500 more on the month, but it's over a 10-year period to pay it back.
They may not have excess to excess money as the Health Department does.
They're funded totally differently.
Yeah. So they may, I mean, I don't care a bit if we can help them out. I mean, we're going to get the money back anyway, but maybe when we get to the funding part of it, we might say that, you know, this doesn't need to exceed...
Well, what the guy came to us with the lease initially was, he said, oh, we need some signage, and we need some of those panel walls redone, and it's going to take a little bit of engineering cords and moving the furniture and things. And then we get the proposal back from Upland, and it's $171,000. I mean, he made it sound like it wasn't any big deal. But then he didn't have a design plan at that time. When he came to see us, he's like, oh, I'll mail you one. And we get that back, and you get the dollar figure on it, but it's that, or we're stuck with the building.
Well, and two, I mean, even if we move forward with it, and then we bid it, and it comes in astronomical that we can't do it, then, you know, we can always reject that bid, you know, reject any and all, any and all bids, you know, when we get to that point.
We have two, two years on the, on the new lease, I guess, that y'all just bid on, so we, or just voted on, rather. So you've got some time, it's just a matter of, you don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah.
Now, this is going to be paid back over 10 years.
Right.
We're doing a two-year lease.
No, our two-year lease is just to extend the one we have now, because they realize that it's due. It goes up like in February or something. And so we had to do an extension of that, so they could bring in this plan, we could start work on it, and then by the end of the two years, we will terminate that lease and have a lease with a different dollar in it.
Different term?
10-year term.
10-year term, okay.
10-year term, all.
Or we're just not going to keep doing two-year term?
No, no, 10-year term. That's the state general is for two years. Or, excuse me, 10 years.
We'll be furnishing the money upfront, they'll be paying it back over 10 years, but then the rent will stay, the rental will stay as far as I know, is what they told me.
It doesn't go down.
It won't go, it won't be going back down. It'll be staying right there.
And I think it's been what it is now for how many years?
Long time, long time.
We haven't, since I've been here in '14, we haven't redone this, so they've been paying what they pay now without any renovations for a long time, so.
And he said today, if y'all wasn't happy with this design or the expense of it, he could go back, and they'd probably do some changes in it to something other else.
Well, we can always see when the bids come back, if, and go a little bit in-depth, well, then maybe we shouldn't do this, but that eliminates $15,000 or something, you know what I'm saying?
So we can't really set the amount for their monthly lease until we know.
Right.
What that's going to be.
And then we'll get into the next one next, but we're on the third part of this one, or the second part right now. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one absent.
Nine, four, one absent. Okay, the third part of this, approval of the amount for the 10-year lease with updated monthly installments, and the amount of to be determined. The new lease will include the expense of the renovations to the building as requested by Tennessee Department of Children and Human Services. The 10-year lease will be presented once the amount is confirmed by the Commission and the State of Tennessee approves the amount. So, well, Tyler, we don't have no figure yet, and we was talking today, and it needs to be at least $5,500 minimum, or more.
It was my understanding with the State of Tennessee that they needed an amount to be able to proceed to get approved at the state to continue to do the renovations. So I think they need an amount from you all to be able to say something to take back for their lease at the state to get it approved. I don't know that they can't.
We got to.
We can't do that without a bid, then. Calculate possibly $200,000. So to pay back $200,000 over 10 years, what's that payment?
We figured it up there down there, and Tyler said the rent would have to at least go up $1,500 a month, minimum.
Probably $1,800 a month, wouldn't it, Tom? But my question, a question I've got to guess, if, if we, if we give them an amount, are we stuck to that amount if the bid comes in wrong? That's my question, is if we put a dollar amount to it, well, you can't, well, we're not going to charge, and it has to be $6,000, well, we're not going to do that, because you said we could do it for $5,500.
We, we asked that question, Larry. Why? Why are we going about it backwards? Because essentially that's what it is. You're going about it in reverse.
Yeah, that's what he said.
And he said, these words right here, get me an approval of the amount for the ten-year lease so I can take it back to the powers that be at the state. And they'll say, "Yeah, we'll, we'll allow you to go forward with fifty-five hundred dollar a month or six thousand dollar a month lease."
Well, that just caps our, I mean, if anything comes in over two hundred thousand dollars, it's just not happening. So I think we calculate based on two hundred thousand dollars, given what the rent, the lease payment will be and go from there.
And so what you gotta realize is that, you know, we've been getting this money and we ain't been having to spend it on them. So we'll be spending this money. So what we get back for the next ten years will just be to make up for that two hundred thousand dollars that we would've been able to use that per month for the general fund.
Which we're still gonna get that. We're still gonna get our basic lease that we have been getting every year, plus this.
If you calculate it right.
Wait, right, we gotta calculate it right.
They're at thirty-nine ninety right now.
That's what this here says, yeah.
You're almost like you're making them a loan for two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that's what you do.
Right, with no interest.
With no interest.
Yeah.
It's just...
We're carrying the note.
If we add eighteen, that's fifty-seven, so could we not just say even sixty-five hundred? And then, then we can negotiate down from that if the bids come in lower?
Why don't we gain, why don't we raise it two thousand? Two hundred thousand, zero percent, ten years, gonna run you about sixteen hundred a month.
Right.
Sixteen, sixteen.
I don't think you're gonna get zero percent interest.
You know, if this thing's...
Four percent. I would say that for about six thousand dollars.
I'd put two thousand on top of what they're paying and if this thing comes in at two and a quarter or whatever, then, then you got a little leeway there.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we put an amount of sixty-five hundred dollars...
What's their current?
Huh?
Thirty-nine hundred.
Thirty-nine.
Okay.
And then we can...
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five. And then we, to be determined once the bid's in...
Be twenty-six hundred. Kind of rate you think we'd get, Tyler?
Do it.
Kind of rate would we be looking at, you think?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't borrow the money for that. I mean, we've got the cash, the, I mean, but you do have to figure that that's the cost of, your cost of money that you're not using.
We're losing what we could make off of this.
Time value of money will be at least four percent in ten years, the way things are going right now, I mean...
Motion made by Commissioner Larry Cooper to set a monthly rental at sixty-five hundred dollars and hope that covers it.
Well, well, we can...
Unless they go if they don't agree to it, the state don't agree to it.
I think Benny seconded it. We can come back. Yeah, we can, if it comes back and it's less than that, then we can adjust it later, but at least it covers us.
Seconded by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Is there any further discussion? So if they determine this at sixty-five, you know, if the state approves it, sixty-five hundred dollars is what it'll be, then the rest of the...
We won't be making money if...
No.
We're losing.
Right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four, one absent.
Nine-four-one, absent. Motion passes. We're on page three. Item number fourteen. Consideration of the following budget amendments. Number one, senior senator donations in the amount of five hundred and seventeen dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald, seconded by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four, one absent.
Budget amendment passes. Item number two, ambulance in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred, two dollars and six cents payment received from the Relief Fund for Public Health and Social Services. Do we hear a motion?
No move.
Second, motion by Commissioner Robert Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Any further discussion?
Um, can we maybe set an ambulance committee meeting to maybe discuss how we should spend this? Justin, are you there?
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
Just get with me when we need to do it.
You wanna set one now or just what you got?
Wind's usually good for everybody. Who else? It's me, you, and...
Me.
How, how far out do you have to make it?
Just need at least three days of business days to advertise.
What about on a Tuesday night, Justin?
Yeah. Is that good for you, Mickey? Is Tuesdays okay for you?
Yeah, sir, I'm like Robert, as early as possible as...
It'd be the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, or the fourth.
Twenty... Twenty-first, good. That's good.
Next week, next Tuesday night?
Next Tuesday night at... Can we do it at four-thirty? You wanna have it here or am I... Probably be better to have it. You don't have it here?
I think they're wanting to discuss renovations. Maybe up there.
We may need to go up there.
We got a nine, I got a nine-one-one meeting that night.
You do on twenty-third?
At five. Can we be done in thirty minutes?
Oh, probably.
Probably.
Okay.
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Four.
All righty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody, is that good for everybody? Four-thirty? Except for Lester, he has a son. Okay. Roll call vote.
Mickey. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four-one, absent.
Nine-four-one, absent. Budget amendment passes for the ambulance. Another ambulance in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, which are donations received in memorial of Jerry Williams for the living quarters at the ambulance service. Hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Julie Matthews. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four, one absent.
Nine-four-one, absent. Item number three, amendment passes. Item number four, victim-witness coordinator in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars to update for the amended contract. Someone wanted to address that one?
I've got a question.
It's, it's an amended contract for the victim's witness budget. It's through the Office of the Criminal Justice Program. It's the one that Jared Effler came in here and asked us to do. This is an update to that contract that they pushed through and it raises the salary section of that contract.
Is it paid back by?
State Tennessee.
State Tennessee pays it back.
No match.
No match.
Well, I'm sorry, it has in kind match, which is office space.
Motion to approve.
Who supervises that?
Motion by Commissioner Kim...
Yeah, District Attorney's Office.
Davison. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, and, and I'm not, of course, they don't have the contract in front of us to, to see it, but, instead of increasing payroll, could this, should this not be used to help benefit the victims? I mean...
It's an increase to salary line item on the contract.
But nothing for the victims, nothing's toward helping the victims that she's supposed to or anyone in that office deals with or helps with. This is just payroll only.
Salary line item increase.
I think that's what the grant was designed for, was for them to be a hire to have a victim-witness coordinator 'cause they didn't have one in the past.
What's that, set that salary at now?
Forty-seven thousand, roughly. It is, but, yeah, I made it right, that, that grant is basically just salary. There's like a little bit of office supplies in it. That's the only thing in the grant. It's to have a victim's witness coordinator. The office is expected to handle, I assume, anything. Leslie may know more about this, but the grant is just, we're not supposed to have to handle anything with the grant, but it's just to have the personnel.
The victim's witness program doesn't pay out money to victims. It coordinates your case.
Well, I didn't say it ought to pay out money to the victims. I think it should assist victims more.
Right. It assists them through having a, one person they go to instead of trying to hit up the DA for everything. They have a person who actually coordinates their case and that person sits with them, um, goes back in the witness room and holds their hand and cries with them and the things that their lawyers typically don't do. So it is an important job.
This is fully funded, correct? Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Against.
Julie.
Four.
Eight-four, one against, one absent.
Eight-four, one against, one absent. Item number five, Board of Education in the amount of a hundred, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and three dollars for Fund One Forty-One Spark Grant. No one here from the Board of Education. Do I hear a motion on it?
So move.
Go ahead. Is this here for vocational equipment?
This is...
Is that something to be useful?
This is for vocational equipment. Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison, seconded by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Any further discussion on this? Looks like they're just moving money around from one line to the other or something.
Do we know what kind of vocational equipment it is or is it... It can be several kinds.
They bought cattle working facilities with this in the past. They bought welders and cutting torches and tanks with it in the past, welding supplies. No, but they have a working facility that they can bring out to people and they can go take students to help work cattle or something.
This is a governmental grant contract. It is, uh, the contract start date's November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. You may begin your grant activities. This means you can begin creating purchase orders and spending grant funds. We will provide more information related to maintaining records and reporting grant activities to TATC in tomorrow's webinar at ten a.m. So this is what they got.
Is this a grant that they've got and the money's come to us, Tyler? We're just transferring it over to basically what this is?
No, this is, this is a budget amendment for Fund One Forty-One. The money's coming into the Fund One Forty-One, but you guys still have to pass those budget amendments for One Forty-One.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Julie.
Four.
Nine-four, one absent.
Nine-four-one, absent. We have, uh, any other business, uh, IT person or IT something? Let Tyler address that for a moment if you don't care. Uh, the gentleman that owned the company that we had passed away and so his clients have went to another company and I think we're looking for some other people that has, that might do it.
Well, actually, just before we started, I talked with Leslie and she said that that company is buying out the estate, so it means they would honor the contract, depending on our dates on the contract, which we may have been in contract with them pretty close to a year now. We've been, we've been in with them for a little while, but they weren't even charging us what they had us given on their, their estimate that they originally sent us. They weren't even charging us as much as they originally told us it would. I know that. I had Tonya look it up just before the meeting started here. And the new quote I got is about nineteen thousand dollars more a year. Almost twenty thousand dollars more a year than what we were paying this company. Now, a portion of that's our email service, which we'll have to continue to pay and a portion of it is antivirus, which we'll have to continue to pay no matter which way route we decide to take with it. But as of right now, I spent all day today at the Justice Center so that some network guys could get around and hook up network. Uh, I was over there last week twice because there were laptops down and network wouldn't work. I mean, I'm, I'm running IT over at the Justice Center right now. That's, that's the big place. I mean, of course, that's the more elaborate location. Most people in this building have a, have a vendor that services their computers for them, such as the finance department has local government. Uh, we have their computers, so they have service agreements and they service our computers for us, the hardware. But if you don't have a vendor that's provided your hardware, you don't have service for it. For instance, Jimmy and Amanda's computer, that's county purchase computers. They don't have a vendor to service. I've tried to contact another company out of Livingston. Uh, they were supposed to get back with me, but I've not heard from them. So still don't think that we can hire and pay a IT personnel for what this would cost. I mean, but at the same time, we have seen a lot of issues that we've ran into with this company due to the fact of just calling somebody and having them come in. So like, let's say the Justice Center, they call this person this time and this person this time. Well, the next thing you know, in a network room, you've got cables and patches running all over the place. Where if you have one person handling it or one company handling it, it's more uniform. Right now, we continually drop network at the Justice Center. Uh, I think Leslie's seen it. It's all the time. There's network down, something's happening. They're calling me saying, "Hey, call somebody and fix it." Well, that's why we're, that's why I was there today, so the gentleman...
It's not every day, it's every hour.
What's the problem?
Well, that's what we're fixing right now.
Bad network, bad, bad system. So we got...
They came in before this gentleman passed away that owned the company before, um, supposed to be ordering the equipment and it never got ordered. I ended up having to order it because he, he got put in the hospital before he got a chance to order it. But that building is set up with pretty high-tech infrastructure. It has fiber, two different types of fiber pulled through the entire building. We were trying to run off of one of those fibers and copper through the whole building. So basically, it's got the infrastructure to run whatever you want to put in there, and we're trying to run it off of one network. One, it'd be like trying to run the, the whole downtown here off of copper. And, and it's, I don't know how to explain that so that everybody understands, but they're fixing it right now. That's what I've been over there. They, we had to buy a switch in and they're having to patch over the fiber and it's way, that is way, way above my head, but I mean...
So, so was it put in wrong?
It never was utilized from the get-go.
So it's like we had a million-dollar elite system and we were running off of a thirty-nine-dollar box from Walmart.
So it was put in wrong. If we, if we had the capability of running on a better service and we didn't do that to begin with, then it was put in wrong.
Nobody ever... Nobody ever came and looked at.
Twin Lakes punched down and terminated the fiber for what they needed, and from then on, we've never had the IT services to go in there and say, hey, you guys have this infrastructure through this whole building. You're not using it. I mean, that's what it boils down to, and these guys came in and they, we're walking around the building. They're like, hey, you've got fiber pulled through this whole building. Why aren't you using it? No, I mean, you're right. It was never utilized from the get-go.
So we've got the, we've got it wired. What I'm hearing, we got it wired. We've just not utilized...
We didn't know enough what we were doing wrong, essentially. We didn't have an IT person, and it was just...
What about cybersecurity and that type of stuff?
Well, that's just it. We run all the cameras from the jail on that. We run...
The whole Justice Center right now is on one network. When they get done, each piece will have its own.
We run the lockdown doors on that, and we're running that on a thirty-nine-dollar Walmart box, but we've got a million-dollar system.
So we're fixing it.
Well...
Yeah, it, it will be fixed after this. Now, their device splitting networks, but we don't have, we had an IT service that could come in and look at it before and say, yeah, you've got this fixed and you've got this network split up. We don't, I can't look at that and tell you. That's way above me.
Who's fixing it when you're saying it's...
Company called ADM, I think.
So it's not our new IT department. It's just we contracted for them to do this service.
No, this is a... Network and electrical service. That's what they do is they come in and they wire these buildings. They pour this stuff, so...
Tyler, how much, with that increase of twenty thousand dollars annually, how much does that have a spending on that a year?
Forty-seven, nine seventy.
So that's...
I think the quote they originally gave us from our first company was like thirty-five thousand. Uh, because me and Jimmy talked about it, and so we've been talking and I was saying it was, you know, it was, this was gonna be, I thought, I thought their quote coming back, this new company was gonna be sixty thousand. And she actually cut some money off of it and came back with this forty-seven, nine seventy, and...
They cut ten dollars or something off of each computer a month.
Yeah, ten dollars from each endpoint and got it to this...
We got seventy, we got seventy computers.
Is this forty-seven thousand dollars with us fixing the system and then they're taking it over, or is this forty-seven thousand dollars them coming and fixing our system and taking it over?
System will be fixed whether we go with them or not.
So this forty-seven thousand dollars has nothing, that doesn't do anything about them. We gotta fix it and then they're gonna ma, then they're gonna maintain it.
The fixing the system came in, I think, when the electricity, the lighting struck, the, the network.
Yeah, the lighting struck, and then they started working on cameras. Then they could never keep the...
Is this gonna be on part of our claim for the, for the storm?
We didn't have any switch hit. This is a separate switch. We're having to put in this whole new deal for it.
They figured out that the reason that you dropped network at the Justice Center every hour is because you can't run that and the computer, or the cameras at the same time.
If you're sitting, if you're sitting at home and you've got your kid streaming a video game or playing a video game online, and you're trying to stream Netflix, and everybody in the house is scrolling through Facebook and watching videos, you overload your network and your TV says buffering, and it'll shut your network down. So what they're doing now is they're running that whole Justice Center. I web visits, they're trying, they, they don't have video arrangement on it yet, but they would have video arrangement. Uh, all phone calls, it's on VoIP system, phone calls, any computer that's running. Everything is running on one copper network right now. But it has the infrastructure for each piece of this, so the sheriff's department will have its own dedicated network, secure dedicated network. Jail will have its own secure dedicated network. Justice Center will have their own. It's gonna all be divided up. If there's a video section, I web, so the I web guy just paid for his own internet. He got tired of dealing with it dropping because he couldn't keep service, so he paid for his own internet and had him pull it into the building. He has his own network in that building. I mean, he could have just tapped into this.
When this building was built, whose responsibility was it? I, I mean, I mean, this is, this is relatively still a new building.
Well, it sounds to me like that, it sounds like to me, we've got a million-dollar system over there and we've never had anybody over there do how to operate it.
That's correct.
It's...
I mean, the, the infrastructure, the system, and what I'm hearing is everything is there. We've got a top-notch system. We've never known, known how to operate it.
And there's none of, I don't know of any of you all who's, I mean, I think that most of us can operate a computer. There's some of us that might be a little more advanced at a computer, but there is none of us in here that can walk into that room and tell that that infrastructure's in there.
No.
I've been around server rooms since I've through college and out of college, and when he pointed out these two wires coming in the ceiling and told me that we have fiber through the whole building, I couldn't have told you that. I mean, it takes somebody who knows what they're doing.
And the first person went in jail was incarcerated. We had about six months, seven months warranty left, one of them. Yes, well, we had left the warranty on that.
Well, and here's the thing, it, it's just that none of this ever has, we've been dropping internet over there, but you'd just get aggravated and you'd go on. But now where we are, we are at such capacity in the back. We are at such capacity up front. At the Justice Center, now we see that it's a problem. We didn't know back in two thousand fourteen that, that we even had an issue of it. You just sort of dealt with it. But, you know, all our commissary is a part of a AT, like an ATM network, so it has to have. I mean, everything we've added over the years has just finally got to the point where it ain't working.
Everything over there runs off internet. You don't have a face-to-face visit anymore. You sit on and do a camera visit.
I talked to four different counties today. Uh, one was, one was like this is gonna be like we've been on twenty-four, seven, whatever, and theirs was sixty-five. And then I talked to three more counties, surrounding counties, and theirs is as needed, and it's running them just as needed, forty to fifty thousand dollars a year.
Now, I wanted to argue just because I knew a little bit about the background of, of the company when it was bought by, or is being bought by this new people. But I think Tyler's right. I think that we're probably right at our cutoff. I mean, I'd go over to the probate court and throw a fit and file motions and that sort of thing and, and prove that he's buying the contracts. But I think even if he is buying the contracts, our time is just about up anyway, so we're not gonna get a big benefit out of that.
I'm pretty sure it was last winter sometime that he came in, we signed on with him and went with everything. And the big, I mean, the big reason was, the main reason we made the switch at the time was the email provider we was using was basically threatening, saying, hey, you're on a blacklist. We'll just shut you down if you have any more spam emails come out. And, and they can handle that, and then they can handle our IT service as well, be able to manage this stuff.
Who else is using this company?
This perimeter. I, I don't know anybody around that was using them. The other company had a few jails. This company has more medical facilities than they do jails.
Who's these companies that Jimmy's called these counties? Who are they using?
The one out of Living, mainly the one out of Livingston that's Cyphotech.
Cyphotech, CI.
And we can't get a call back from him?
I called him. I talked to him. They sent me over to another guy. He's supposed to get back with me.
Gonna give it a few days.
I mean, if, if the upper Cumberland is using a guy that's local sort of, then, and he's doing a good job for them, we need to find out if he's doing a good job for them.
I mean, that's Livingston. This is Crossville. I mean, as far as, there's nothing in Fentress County that I know of, that I'm aware of.
Well, local, I mean, upper Cumberland maybe. I should say not Fentress County.
This one gentleman was there today in the office. He lived, does he live in Fentress County?
Yeah, the guy that worked, well, the guy that works for them, he worked for the other company and he's moving...
That's being bought out.
To this company. He's with this new company.
In Crossville.
He's the one that handled our account, so he knows mostly what we're doing.
Well, we don't want him no more because he didn't know what he was doing at the Justice Center.
He's just been here a year. He's the one that set us up, set us up to fix the Justice Center, but he lives in Fentress County.
Gonna check around a few days and then bring it back up.
When is the cutoff date? January?
Cut off. We don't have coverage right now.
Well, I mean, it was, it's a year from the time you signed it, correct?
I, they won't send anybody out right now. I'm, I'm just telling you, they're not. That's why I'm having to go.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're using this company already to fix the system, then...
I mean...
I mean, the third company, not the other, this DM or whatever you, the initials you gave of the company that's putting this piece in, right?
Oh, no, that's, they're just wiring. They're just...
That's what I'm saying, but that's gonna fix the system, right?
Not the whole county. That's gonna, that's gonna hopefully fix our...
We weren't talking about the whole county. We were talking about the Justice Center.
But this, this is for the whole county.
Right, but...
But now, if something goes down, if the election office, something happens, we don't have IT coverage right now. Between local government and B I S, probably five or six offices at the most. B I S doesn't furnish their hardware. They only furnish the software, so we have to keep up with the computers, with the hardware. We have to service it. Local government provides hardware, so they service the hardware. And I think we only have two within the county government that's on local government. Salt Waste has it for, uh, for their stuff too, uh, but no trustee's office.
So my concern is that this new company that's took over, we're still kind of sort of in a contract, knowing what, but...
When I called him today, he only had one guy working for him. They don't have any techs now. See, the tech that worked for him is now with Perimeter. Perimeter won't let their tech go out, won't let this guy come out. He's helping me over the phone, but I have to be there and do it. He won't, they won't let their tech come out because we're not in agreement with them. We don't have a contract with them.
So Perimeter is the new company we'd be going to, but they're not willing to... I mean, I'm surprised they're not, they didn't offer to come out and try to help, you know, is it like goodwill efforts if they're wanting to continue? Yeah, I'm, you know, be a good way to earn business.
Yeah, according to them, they seen his books after he passed away and said that he, he couldn't have been sustained for another year either anyways. He was way below market. No, I mean, this is definitely high. It's a lot higher. Whenever I got the quote, I called Larry and I said, I don't know what to do.
But if you look at trying to hire somebody, it's just, you're looking at twenty-four, seven coverage.
Well, you're gonna spend ten thousand dollars a year just on your email services. So you knock ten thousand dollars off that for just email service, but that's off both of them. So both of those numbers include our email service and antivirus. I mean, you're looking at, you're looking at twenty thousand dollars a year we're gonna have to spend anyways for email service and antivirus more than likely.
What we do, yeah.
The only difference you're seeing now is, is we pay for this out of one data processing line. It's not split up between every single button. But you can't hire, you'll not, I mean, you won't hire an IT guy in for twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
And nothing is ever one person. Everything we ever do, if you hire one, you end up needing two more, so that usually doesn't work well.
And what about the, I mean, does this have our cybersecurity into this? And I, I mean, how are we on that as well? I mean...
Yeah, they've got, I mean, they've got some ransomware protection. I mean...
Are we ransomware protected right now?
I think the answer is yes. I think you should say yes.
We, we were.
Well, I mean...
We were until a guy died of COVID, but we don't know now, is what we're saying. They're keeping our email service going, correct? I mean, obviously, we have...
Well, now, I'm paying the other company for our email service. They've moved that over and they're hosting our Microsoft Office or whatever now, our three sixty-five. That gets our Microsoft three sixty-five, that gets our Excel, Word, all, our email service, our domains, it's all through that.
I mean, I, this technology stuff's way over my head, but I do know one thing, I've been in business and stuff, if you ain't got it right, you got big problems, big problems. And I just barely know how to turn one on and off, so...
Tyler, uh, who do you suggest we get to, uh, look into the improvement that we've got?
Just out of due diligence, I mean, this is a professional service. It's not, not necessarily a bid service, but we will enter contract, so, you know, we're gonna discuss it here. But I do wanna see what the other company can get back if they'll give me back a price. I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I would, it would be nice if we could hire somebody in for twenty thousand dollars that can handle all of our IT services, but I just don't think that you can do that. I mean, not realistically.
You'll take a few days, bring it up at the ambulance thing, meetin' or that, now...
Because obviously, we, that we need some because the jail's crashing constantly.
Well, we're hoping this fixes the network issues.
And there's no need for that happening if we have, uh, the facilities there to produce.
Well, with the holidays coming up, I mean, if, if Tyler can find something out, instead of meeting on the seventeenth, we could, I don't know if we can meet on the seventeenth anyway. No, we can't. We're gonna have to meet on the tenth anyway, or the tenth or the... Yeah, the tenth or the twenty-fourth. So if he can, if Tyler can get some information back pretty quick instead of waiting too long, we could do January the tenth meeting.
I mean, I'll see what...
Because you, it may be difficult to get the next two, three weeks. You've got Christmas, New Year's, all that stuff coming up, so...
Jimmy did talk to a county that's using this company.
In Livingston?
Using...
Cyphotech. You said it's sixty, sixty-five thousand?
They're using it, no, uh, I don't, I'm not sure what one Smith county is using. I can find out. I can find it out.
But I mean, it'd take, January the tenth, that'd give you enough time to, to get maybe...
Yeah, I, I just may be back with the same one. You said that's as much as she can cut this quote. I try to haggle with her, but...
It, uh, you know, I, I like Kim's statement there, you know, that we've, if, if they're wanting forty-seven thousand dollars for us, why would you not send your guy out to, hey, let's get you off the ground, get you running, get you fixed, and then we'll enter a contract with you, and they, they weren't, they weren't willing to do something like that, so I'm not sure how much they're gonna be willing to wanna work with us.
If, if you have available resources for that, but if you don't have available resources to send, I mean...
Well, then are they gonna have the resources when we hire them? I mean, if they don't have them now, are they gonna be, are they capable?
What's the, he said, if you're, if you're contracted, you, your priority if you're under contract. That's the way he put it today.
But if they've only got one tech and they're gonna have ten counties...
No, this company's got, this company's got three, I think. Or the whole company just had one tech. This company's got three, I believe they said.
You're under contract, I'm under contract, or not under contract, and he said if we called at the same time, you'd be the one to get the service, not wouldn't they?
Which now he, I, Candy's computer was down today and I called him. He helped me over the phone, so, I mean, he got it going. He will help me. I mean, I know the guy personally. He'll help me, but, you know, somebody has to be there to do, if, if a computer's not on the network, you can't remote to it, somebody's gotta be there to do it.
Every time I've gone to court in the last week, Tyler's been there fixing somebody's computer. I'm like, what are you working now? Hey, you're gonna become our IT person.
No, no, I'm not either. My plate's full, thank you.
We're saving money, look at us.
We don't need no, we don't need no motion. We just need to, you know, just, not gonna do something out. We don't need a motion if he just wants to, want Tyler to check into it, call this company here again.
Find us somebody to solve our problem.
Might as well problem too while we're at it.
We've got a problem and we need to fix.
Santa Claus, you've got our list.
Money is all.
I've got everybody's list.
Mr. Chairman, if we're done with that, I've got some new business. Is it okay?
Is everybody, that's the way we wanna go, and try to find out what we can the next week or so, and hope nothing falls apart between them. Who we got that we can call or something? Does it...
Tyler.
They've got him on speed dial.
All righty, Ms. Julie, and then when you get done, I've got one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. The eighteenth at six P M. at the Jamestown Community Center. The, uh, city has, uh, let, uh, Commissioner Miller over here, he, not charge him nothing for it, and he is putting on the fourteenth annual free community concert, and it is for the toy drive. They're not gonna charge any, uh, rent. They're not gonna charge you many rent this year, and the cost to get in is one toy. Correct?
Yeah, one new toy. It's still in the original pack. Uh, they're, uh, asking that everything is new and stays in the original pack because, uh, they're gonna try, we're trying to, they've got a lot already, but we're shooting for ages ten and up is what we're shooting for. Uh, the deadline on that to get them to me or the sheriff's department is the eighteenth, so this is really our big, uh, final push to get as many toys as we can, and you know, they, the sheriff's department does this annually, so, and they go to help all of our local kids within this county that just, you know, needs a little extra help this year for Christmas.
That is Saturday at six P M.
Saturday at six P M. at the community center.
Food will be there also.
Yep, and we'd like to also extend an invitation out to all the emergency services, personnel, military veterans, anybody, please come out. We're gonna honor you as well, so just make sure y'all come out to that as well.
Ms. Julie.
Um, I'd just like to bring up about the bus aids again. Um, you know, we've been talking about it for months and months, and we were told it would be on the agenda at the school board, and it wasn't, and we sent letters to Mike Jones, we sent letters to the school board, and it just fell on deaf ears. I've talked to school board members. I've been told different things, like we gave them a job, blah, blah, blah. Uh, we were told at the budget meeting, I believe, Jimmy, you called a school board member and they told you they put it on the agenda for December. Well, I was at the meeting last week. It was not discussed. So there's no will, I think, by the school board to give that stipend of fifteen hundred dollars that they gave everyone else in the school system. But the school paid, the bus aids, I mean, bus drivers got it, everyone in the cafeteria, teachers, janitors, everybody got it except bus aids.
It will be, be on the January agenda, I believe.
I, I believe, I thought you said December.
I think it's gonna be on the January one, January one, yeah, it's on the January one.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean... Oh, okay. Well, I misunderstood.
It'll be on the agenda in January.
Okay. Well, all right. We'll see if that happens then. But all right. Well, I withhold what I was always going to say then. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? We'd like to wish, on behalf of our office and the commissioners, we would like to, uh, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and hope we get blessed next year with as much as we have this year. They're here a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All negatives, we'll let you out in the morning.
D.C. Saiclos, you're telling me.
Thank you all for coming.